I think we're close enough. Called meeting to order. Welcome everybody here. Pretty important meeting. We're running up against the wall now for adoption of our budget. But I want this, this is a little bit different. So I want it to be efficient. Let's just, when I recognize somebody, let's hear them out and then we'll go to open discussion. But I do want to answer everybody's questions and come away from here, I hope, tonight with, with a budget we can, can live with. So having said that, I'll get right to it. Need approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion carries. Okay. So administration budget. Do you have something you want to say there before I got into the crowd here?
Sure. Just a little bit of a preamble. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. I just want to acknowledge the hard work that the governing board has done to overcome an incredibly exceptional onboarding period with a large number of new elected officials that have come on board. You didn't necessarily have the luxury of leaning on someone who has been in office a long time. The experience level dropped from 25 years on average to 10 years on average. Two-thirds of you were learning each other, new for the first time. You attended an essentials of local government class that was highly abridged from what previous commissioners had attended. And so I'll give you a plug. Even if you went to the former essentials class, the school of government has a much more robust class, so please sign up. Shannon, I think that, you know, you're signed up for that, so I applaud you for that. That's going to be a much more encompassing class than the one that I think that you had experienced. And you did all that in a global pandemic. So you were restricted on when you could meet. When you did meet, you were restricted on how you could meet. So I applaud you for overcoming a lot of onboarding obstacles that were truly exceptional. I think as part of that process, it may have become confusing or misunderstood on what the roles of staff were, so I just wanted to reemphasize that staff is here to assist you. We are here to help you and put you in a position where you can make the most informed decision on the topics that are placed before you. So as an example, the one-on-one monthly meetings where I share with you the, the draft budget or even the work sessions that we go through, all those are intended to get as much information and get you in a place that's comfortable. So again, tonight, we are here to help you and get any answers that are necessary to put you in a position to make a decision. And also know that when we bring you forth a recommendation, whether it's a topic or whether it's the budget, it's based upon a fiscal analysis, a policy analysis, and operational details that we have that you might not have access to. But understand they're just a recommendation. It's not a us versus you. It's just a way to get through an analysis and give you something to comment upon. And whether you move on it or not, that's okay. It's just an option to start a discussion. And then lastly, I'll mention what the mayor said. We were getting very close on time to adopt. We have one week left in statutory timeframe. We still have yet to load the budget into the software. And until we do that, we can't execute the POs to start the government functioning come July 1st. So I just wanted to share that as a preamble, and then I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. I'm gonna try to work our way through this. Shannon, you sent a very good list that you and Larry, I think, had worked on. And did it go to everybody? I didn't. It did? Okay. Well, I think this is a good starting point. Work down this list. Do you want to run with it? You want Larry to run with it? You want me to run with it?
Why don't you go ahead? That's, that's fine, Mayor.
Okay. There's a number of questions. You wanted clarification on cellphone usage for employees. And does everyone employed by the town get a cellphone stipend? If so, why? Why not? How's the determination to provide a stipend made? And what reevaluations are made? And how often? And what is the townwide IT and phone policy? Joe?
Okay. And just as an overview, Mayor, I'm going to try to tackle most of these, but there are some, the questions that are related to police, fire, and parks and rec, I think, are pretty nuanced. And so I'm going to call up the directors to answer that. In regard to the first question, there is a cell, cellphone is, is allowed for use by employees? For those employees that are at the supervisory level, the stipend is $50. So when I say supervisory level, I'm talking department directors. Those below that are 35. The, the $50 ones is because someone on salary could get called at any moment. The one for the 35, either they are using that phone while they're on duty or they are literally on call or they're getting called into work. So it's not every employee, but for those that do get a stipend, it's a $50 stipend or a $35 stipend. To that last part of the question, what is the townwide IT and phone policy? We have an appropriate use policy for technology that all of our employees have to sign off on.
President.
I just needed to know the breakdown because the recommended budget for the cellphone usage for the town is $45,473. And that seemed excessive. I mean, when you break it down to everyone getting, let's just say, $50 a month, I think it wound up being 75 employees. So I just wanted to know if all employees were getting this stipend and how it was evaluated. Larry, did you have any other questions?
Where did you pull that number from, Shannon?
I added up all of the different cellphone.
You added them up as you went through?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I was looking under admin or governing body, and it's 600.
Well, governing body is 600, finances 600. And I would expect, you know, the police and the fire to be much higher because...
No, I get it. I just wondered where you pulled that number from.
No, I added all of the different ones up.
Added it up. Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Any other comments on that? Do you want to talk about it or...
I, I just needed to have an understanding of where that large amount of money was going and how it was being distributed because, you know, it seems like, especially in the public works arena, I don't know. I mean, Larry and I talked about, you know, we didn't know if there were radios that could have been used instead since, for the most part, I don't believe any of those employees should be out of town limits. Correct?
Okay. Does anyone else have any concerns? Larry?
Yeah. Are there any other means of communication? I know the fire and police have radios, but do we have any backup communications beyond the cellphones? At one point in time, I think there were radios.
One thing I just wanted to add to the cellphone piece of it is, one of the things you see in the line items, in addition to the allowances that Joe talked about, is if a fireman, if a public works, use those examples, have an iPad, they have cellular service. Also, you'll see occasionally you'll have a few hotspots or cellular connection for internet. So those items are also added into your cellphone budgets because they actually are paid through Verizon. In regards to the radios, yes, we have, Public Works has emergency radio system. And it's, and I say Public Works, it's actually been distributed through all the other departments. Each of them have handhelds or they have a truck-mounted radio unit. And recently, and we put a, what I call a magic box in, allows during emergency situations for us to communicate with the police and fire on the 800 megahertz system.
So there is a secondary system as well?
And I think one of your, one of you guys' questions was about a radio line item that was zero. That's just coming from the old chart of accounts where we originally made some investments about battery replacements or we've done some upgrades to that, what I call magic box that's at the fire station allows us to communicate together. But that's it. But yes, we, we do have a backup system that we use in emergency situations. And we use it for, a lot of times for public works, for traffic control situations and stuff like that because it's instant and immediate feedback.
Other comments or questions on that? Everybody okay? Okay. Clarification about funds spent on appointed boards for appreciation and recognition.
Okay. This is something new. We've rolled out this year. How it gets used is really going to be dependent upon the governing board. This is just an attempt to recognize your volunteer boards, whether they be your planning board, your board of adjustment, or your parks and rec advisory board.
But the parks and rec advisory board also has two, I believe it's $2,000 set aside for them. Is, is that in addition to or is that something different, Sheila? Or Joe, if Joe has the answer.
Turn it to Sheila.
So the, the $2,000 that's in our budget for the parks and rec advisory board wasn't necessarily for appreciation of that board. It is for training and to provide, like engagement efforts of that advisory board with the community as well as to help them. Each year, we do a retreat to develop, to review what the parks and rec department is doing and how we're working with the advisory board and how the advisory board would like to work with the department and the community for that year. So that $2,000 was something that we initiated last year, but with COVID, we've not really been able to do a whole lot with, to just help give them a resource to help connect with the community. So, for example, this year, their retreat, they identified a, a list of things that they wanted to do, but two of the themes coming out of that were community engagement and community awareness. So they wanted to be able to engage with our community to make sure that, you know, they had a face and that people knew of the parks and rec department and knew of, of what the parks and rec advisory board does and how that people can get involved. So both of the community awareness and community engagement go hand in hand in how they can do that.
Okay.
So that's what that $2,000...
Okay. All right. So it's separate from the... Okay. Thank you.
Other questions on that? Governing body salaries. I think I can answer that a little bit. Back some years ago, and I mean, some years ago, we struggled every year, like what to do for the town board and decided that whatever the, the base was at that time, that it would just simply be whatever the cost of living indexed is year after year after year. And we would not revisit it to take, you know, trying to get the politics out of it so people couldn't say, oh, you're giving yourself a big fat raise or whatever. So that's what it is now. It's up to this board if you want to keep it that way. But that was our attempt to stabilize it every year so that, again, we didn't have that conundrum, if you will, of, well, what are we going to do with our own salaries? So we don't, we have, since that time, it's just cost of living. If it's zero, then it's zero. And that's the way it's been for years. You may not want to keep it that way, but that's how it got to what it is today. So any questions on that?
Is that written in a policy that we could read?
I don't know. I don't remember it was done. I'm not kidding you. It was done quite some time back. I don't, I don't even know if Lisa was... Did you hear that?
It was last January 1st.
And could you answer his question?
It was not with a hall, by the, by the hall.
So just, we just said that's the way it was and let's wait. Okay.
We probably should draft a policy or something we can all reference.
And that's fine. You know, we were a little less strict back then. Anyway, did that answer your question for both of you?
Mm-hmm.
Did it answer for everybody else? Okay. We'll put it on the list and make it a policy then. Joe? Okay. Well, I'm, I'm doing it, I'm looking by department and I'm looking at governing body which sort of fits in here. Several of you had asked me about setting aside $300,000 for attorney's fees. Did, did, did y'all want to talk about that?
If that's the time to talk about it, yeah, I'd like to talk about that.
Now's a good time. I'm trying to follow mine through the book while I'm following yours down the page. So whoever wants to speak, go.
Well, I guess my first question is, looking at 2019 actual, $261,000, and then projected for next year, all the way to $300,000, is that an hourly rate increase or why the $40,000 increase?
Okay. That does not affect, that does not include all of Wyrick Robbins. Other items in there include retreat as an example. I'm going through my book, but that's not all...
So this includes the internal, or the internal audit we have on our books?
The audit is listed separately.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it is listed here at $30,000.
Right. Yeah.
And the retreat, I assume, was a facilitator or the expense of the retreat?
Both of those, yes.
I think that putting all of Wyrick Robbins' charges on the governing board does not appropriately reflect the usage by town staff of Wyrick Robbins in their staff meetings. And so I think that that needs to be changed or maybe we just adjust the amount that is going to be reflected on the governing board, that number.
The, the distinction would be about $15,000. The, the services that Wyrick Robbins come in that are attached exclusively to staff are attendance at those management team meetings. Everything else is business of the town, whether it's due diligence on GSK property as an example or attending meetings like this. So we can appropriate it anywhere. The, the bottom line is the budget amount will stay the same.
Yeah. And, and I personally like to see a focus so you don't have to go through like you did on sale and add stuff up if you can, I mean, if it's significant, which I don't think that amount is significant.
Well, it's, it is also of interest to know, and this is arbitrary, folks, that say the planning board or the plan department used, you know, Wyrick Robbins for $12,000 of the $15,000. You know, there would naturally be a question as to why.
Well, it can actually, in my mind, be done as a sub note, just like these are done as sub notes.
Which, which I think is valuable in order for us to understand the accounting.
That way you see the breakdown, but you don't have to go through, you know? That's what I was trying to avoid. But is everybody okay with this? I mean, I know I had several of you ask me questions, so I want to be sure it got out on the floor. I noticed Eric not saying anything. No. Sorry, being silly. Is everybody okay? Good answer. Ready to go? Okay. All right.
A quick question on group health. How many people does that cover? Because I know we have some retired state employees on the board, one's still working with the state. We waive the health insurance, so that $37,800 is for how many people?
We have about 70, a little less than that full-time employees. We also, depending upon when they retired from the town, we covered their supplemental insurance.
So this is the governing body budget? I'm just curious, how many people are in that 37,800?
Let's see. Okay, that 37,800, that's, you'll find that department by department. That's, that's the health insurance for that particular department. So you'll see, you'll see, so as an example, the 37,800 is the health insurance for you all. When you go to budget and finance, there'll be another number for health insurance. That's for that department.
Was that your question, Larry?
Yeah. Well, my question was, in the governing body budget, which is a standalone budget for the board, how many people does that $37,800 cover?
Okay. Let me get Bobby to answer that.
That's for all six of you. When you opt out and get the CAFE paid, that comes out of that same line item. When you opt out, what ends up happening, just some cleanup during the year later, your FICA will be additional, will be more than what it says here, the 3100 because of the way, when you opt out. I think four of you opt out, I believe. So, but anyway, the opt-out pay that you get comes out of there. But that 37,800 is for six, all six of you.
If we opt out, it just seems like that number would be taken out of this health line budget because it's not an expense.
Well, when you, when you get the CAFE paid and when you opt out, it comes out of there. The, the group insurance line.
Right. If you opt out, you still get paid, but it doesn't seem like these numbers, these, in other words, I'm trying to drill down to these numbers and I can't figure out where they come from.
Yeah. It's basically about, I think, five, $5,800 or, or $6,000, $6100 or $6,200 per person what we allocate town-wide for everybody. So that's what it is, 6100 or 6,200 times six.
So this is showing six people, but yet we're not all taking the insurance is what I'm, what I'm trying to say.
All right.
But we do get a stipend out of it.
Yeah. But then you should budget that in a different category. Otherwise, this budget really makes no sense.
He was.
You know? I'm just trying to classify the expenses.
No, I understand what you want. Like I said, for me, it doesn't make that much difference, but it does to you, that's fine. I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. No problem.
Bobby, may I, may I skip since he's up here? If you're, if you're done, Larry.
Well, I'll drill down later. It just doesn't seem like you should take, if there's six people and insurance is 6,000 per person, for example, that is $36,000. But if several of the people waive that expense, I don't see why the expense is being reported when it is not an expense.
Well, it still sort of is when you get, okay, so you're allocated, I think it's 500 and some a month, okay? When you opt out, you get about 70, 75%. So when you get that 75%, it's also charged to group insurance. I get what you're saying, but it is still being charged to the group insurance line.
Yeah. It just seems like it should be reported as a different expense than health insurance.
We could call it something different. The dollar figure in the end really won't be any different, though. That makes sense?
Yeah. We, we can talk about it later. If, if the total number is still 37,800, that's fine, but I think it needs to be in the budget as the appropriate expense.
Okay. See, the way we put it in, we don't know who's going to opt out, so we allocate the whole 6,200 per person. And then, like I said, as the year shakes out, for those that opt out, the FICA, we end up transferring some from the insurance to the FICA to cover the additional FICA. Because there, when we get the CAFE pay, we're paying FICA on that also, which increases the, the FICA line more than what we budgeted for. So they sort of even out. But I get what you're saying.
On B3, page B3, just in case you need to reference it, the property taxes for 2022 are projected to be less than what the estimated taxes are for 2021. Is that just because the spending is down? This is not the actual, like, rooftop taxes?
On B3, the operating is 6.6 million. That is the operating portion of the property tax revenue. If you go to B7, that is the dedicated property tax portion. You see the $1,028.
Where, where are you on B7?
Excuse me, B6, I'm sorry, B6. Where it lists the other financing sources for capital, the first one. So if you add them, it's really 7,628 is going to be the grand total.
The grand total will be 7,628. Okay. Once again, I think maybe a little bit more clarification and help for us to, in, in deciphering the budget would be useful. Any other questions about that, guys? Any other questions about that, guys? And then I just have a question for, on B4, about the investment earnings?
Yeah, they're next to nothing.
Right. But they, they didn't use to be?
Yeah, well, interest rates are at all-time lows right now, so we're earning nothing. I mean, we'd be lucky at $3,000 this year. Whereas two, three years ago, we were 215,000, I think.
Right, this is why I had that question. Okay. All right, sorry, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I want to circle back to insurance. One thing that's kind of bothered me a little bit is that this year, we brought the consultants in, and the consultants said, okay, we were able to negotiate the insurance rates the same as they were last year. But then, as I understand it, there was a consultant fee over and above that.
No, for groups our size, there's a flat commission, no matter what. So our previous broker was earning the same commission as this guy, these people are.
That's what I want to be sure of, is that the consultancy is coming out of the premium, not adding on top of the premium.
Correct.
And I had wondered that, and I wanted to be sure that that's the way it was, because if not, you're not putting apples to apples.
Yeah, I think it's a flat 5%, I want to say.
Right, but that 5% again, to be clear, I don't mean to run it in the dirt, comes off of the premium, not add-on for their services on top of the premium.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, like what we pay to the United Healthcare, they cut IBA commission check.
They pay out of that. I get it, that's all I wanted to be sure, because it was not clear to me when they made that presentation, and I tried to get clarification, and it's just been something in the back of my head itching to know the correct answer for it, so I'll leave that alone. The last question that I personally have on this issue has to do with 15,000 for early elections. I know that because of those fees, a lot of municipal governments are trying to decide whether to do early elections or not. Since, in our case, that is really high per vote. So I don't know if, I don't know about that number.
I had thought that we had decided that we weren't going to do early elections, and so is that 15 grand for the early elections, or is it, that's just the cost of elections now?
I believe that's just the cost of elections.
Yeah, the note next to the 15,000 says, "Does not include early voting." The 15,000 is just your, the cost for your standard election.
Okay, it says, "Does not include early elections." My oversight, I'm sorry. So, okay. All right, I'm going to move on down Shannon and Larry's list. Budget and Finance, what are the professional services, and are these services ever reviewed and sent out for bid?
I'm going to let Bobby answer that.
Basically, what this is made up of is the actuarial study that's done for the OPEB, other post-employment benefits, and the law enforcement officer separation allowance. The League of Municipalities contracts with Kavanaugh and McDonald, that's who does the study, and it's about $5,000 a year. Other things that are paid out of there are the CAFER application fee, and then printing the CAFER, and then some drug testing, and then wire and bank fees, really. That's the only thing, the only other things that come out of this line.
Okay.
Could I answer anybody's question? Okay, explain advertising line in Budget and Finance.
That's just for the public notice of budget public hearing. Really, that's all that is, the $200.
Okay.
Everybody okay? All right, Admin, who's the Public Information Officer?
That would be me. So we do public information, while it is, while it is listed under the Administration Department, it's listed there primarily for bookkeeping, so the day will come when we have a Public Information Officer. We need it sooner than later. But how we operationalize that is, it's decentralized to each department, for them to push out information, for them to share each other's posts. I'll put out information that I'm looking to push out, but also I'm getting information from them based upon their experiences. But specifically, the Public Information Officer typically for a town this size is your manager.
Other question. What's the part-time salary and for who?
Okay, that was zeroed out this year. Typically, we have a Master of Public Administration grad student who serves as an intern. We were not able to do that this year, or last year, because of COVID, and also because we had lingering effects of COVID, but also times were tight, we zeroed that out.
Elaborate on contracted services.
Okay, so this includes a lot of employee training. It can be online training, it can be, it can also be associated with our Employee Assistant Program overseen by McLaughlin Young. Those are some examples of the contracted services.
The Employees Assistance Program is then different than the Tuition Assistance Program?
Yeah, tuition assistance is, is nothing more than if someone goes back to pursue a degree, we allot as much as $1,000 a year per employee, but that's, that's separate than employee assistance. Employee assistance is really more psychological, social support-related services.
Yeah, that line item's more than doubled since 2020. What actually drove that increase? For example, we were at $15,849 actual in 2020, and we're recommended $41,000 for the next budget cycle.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to go back and look and see what we budgeted in years past, but we're, we're, we are considerably beefing up our training now. So as an example, and you've, you've seen this mentioned in the, you've seen this mentioned in the weekly updates, things like our diversity and inclusivity training, so that the amount of training we're pushing out has, has bumped up. Does that represent the change that you're talking about? I don't know, I'd have to go back and look at that previous years, but we are pumping up the amount of training.
And most of that's going to be conducted by outside trainers?
It can be, can be online. We can also do some of that internally. We've been doing some of it by partnering with some of our adjacent local governments. So there's a myriad of ways for us to push that out.
Everybody okay?
Mm-hmm.
Are we doing updates, and who's doing them?
We have the capabilities to make minor updates. The major updates, which I think is what the question was related to, would, we've got a contract to upkeep and administer the website through a company called VC3. We could pull the trigger sooner and have them upgrade the site, but right now, our contract runs through next year.
And so we've got internal folks that are updating the website, and is that done? I'm assuming, I think that Lisa was doing it for quite some time, correct? Is, are we still having one person do it?
No, no. It's very much like the public information. We have to decentralize it for an organization our size, so it's really up to each department to update their own pages.
Okay. And the $9,400, even though it requested was 13,349, so you were able to negotiate the contract with VC3, down to 9,400?
No, there's, there were some thing, it wasn't a negotiation, it was the fact that some things got pulled out. We're also looking to, so we've got some networking services that we're contracting that we're looking to do differently, and so the scope of that service is going to change. And so that's really the driver of that, the change that you're referring to.
Does the contract include cybersecurity?
That is covered actually in our insurance. And so our insurance rates for property insurance went up significantly, and it went up significantly for our cyber protection. But that's not related to the contract that I was just referring to. That's just insurance through the league.
Any other questions on that? Okay, explain reduction in wellness program.
Yeah, so we've had a very robust and effective wellness program. One of the things, because we are such a small staff, we want to keep our staff healthy so we're, we're not having as many people out of work, but also we're trying to keep our health insurance premiums in line. So we were doing some very aggressive things in the previous years, things like nutrition classes, and we've just cut back on that because the finances are tight, but also the COVID restrictions really limited our ability to come together for events like that.
Okay. All right, is tuition 5,000 per class, per person, per degree?
It's 1,000 per person, per year.
Per year.
5,000 is just the total.
I knew that, I'm sorry they asked the question.
All right.
Yeah, and you had already answered it, but thank you.
Okay, everybody okay with that? How much of that's being used?
I'm the only one using it right now, I believe. We had, we had a promising opportunity with one of Michael's employees, but she decided to go to school full-time, so, but we keep pushing out there, we would love for our employees to pursue and take advantage of this program.
And that's on a first come, first served basis?
That's correct.
Okay. Who is in charge of East Wake TV?
Yeah, I guess that would be me. It's, as far as representing the town of Zebulon, it's, it's a consortium of seven different municipalities, so they all have a seventh of a piece of the pie, so to speak. So we're one-seventh, I as your manager and the representative for the town, but there's seven voices at the table.
Is, is that fee the same across all of the municipalities, or is it larger for the larger towns?
Now, the way, the way the public education and government funds work is, they have a pot of money at the state, I want to say it's $4 million. They distribute it by the number of stations. Each town within East Wake TV has two stations, and so the equivalent is about 56,000, so each town gets 56,000 that rolls through them, and then just gets bundled directly through to East Wake TV. Actually, PEG Media is the name of the company.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, for clarification, that is run by a Board of Directors, of which you represent us.
Correct.
On that board. Okay, other questions on East Wake TV? All right. Planning, what, explain minimum housing.
Yeah, I'm going to let Michael explain some of the details about what we encounter and what we have to work through when we come across a minimum housing case.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Minimum housing is actually the most complex of our code enforcement process, unlike typical code enforcement processes where tall grass and weeds or junk and debris, which allows our staff to go and just do a review from the exterior. Minimum housing cases actually require legal review to make sure that we're contacting the property, proper property owner. Additionally, it requires us to contract services to other organizations and individuals. Specifically, a typical code enforcement case would include legal review to make sure we have the correct property owner, hiring a contractor to go in with our building inspector, as well as our staff, to determine the value of improvements necessary to be made, because that's where the threshold on whether or not it moves forward with full minimum housing case or not would take in consideration. Additionally, a lot of these structures also have some sort of infestation problem, so part of that is also contacting an exterminator. One, to make sure our staff is safe, and two, to make sure that that problem doesn't spread to the neighboring properties. The amount that's budgeted is an average ballpark to allow for us to address three minimum housing cases per year. Each of those does have a different value based on the intensity. As an example, there was one on East Lee Street a couple of years ago that exceeded $4,000 per year for multiple years. So that, that is an estimate based on several years of data.
And the housing authority doesn't take up any of those expenses, say, like when there's an infestation?
No.
No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions on planning? All right, police. What does materials and supplies include?
I'm going to recognize the police chief to run through this category.
Good evening, everybody. Hope y'all are doing well. Materials and supplies is kind of the miscellaneous catch-all. It includes office supplies, battery replacement plaques, business cards, chairs for the office defibrillators. It's just sort of a miscellaneous type file or line.
All right, community policing? Policing? I'll hit it out.
The community policing line helps us support different community engagement programs, so National Night Out, when we go into the elementary schools and hand out rulers, markers, pens, the wristbands that we have for kids. It would include any kind of, like, popsicle event or pop-up kind of party that we do in a community. In the coming year, we'll be implementing our first community academy, and it will supply funding for that as well.
Wasn't there a separate line item for Citizens Academy that I saw somewhere? Maybe not, or maybe it was zeroed out? I don't recall that. There is a separate line for Shop With A Cop, maybe you might think about that, and that's donated money.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Explain the Mudcat special pricing for off-duty police services.
So there was a contract negotiated with Mudcats a couple of years ago that offered them a rate of $25 an hour. They also supply a meal for the officers who are working. This is something that will be renegotiated in the coming year, but the way that the baseball season went this year and how it kind of, we didn't know when it was going to happen, we did not go through a negotiation process, but the general manager knows that it'll be something we'll talk about in the coming year.
I believe that, from what I've been told, is that part of that contract negotiation included tickets for the police department, and I'm not sure, well, perhaps before you were here, and I really think it's important for us to get that contract renegotiated so that the officers are being paid an appropriate amount, and that there is nothing else that is exchanging hands that is perhaps not above board.
Well, we have a certain number of tickets for every game, anyway.
Correct.
But I just want to be sure everybody knew that, so if anybody wants to go to the game, they can come down here and get a ticket and go to the game, so.
Yeah, the other hourly rate for off-duty officers, do we know if that's been revised to include the price of the vehicle, fuel, wear and tear?
It has not been. There are, there are other fees that are associated with it other than the base salary, so the insurance. What other items fall into the general? FICA? FICA and retirement, but no, that's something for us to reevaluate in addition to the base salary, because we're not competitive.
Okay, it's on the It's on the to-do list?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Right, and one thing to remember is that that is in town. So there's a certain level of service that we're obligated to provide, not necessarily in the stadium, but it is within our corporate limits.
What, the stadium? Oh, well, yes, of course, but they do hire a-
I just wanted to make sure y'all were aware that there are certain obligations that we have out there, not necessarily in the stadium, I'm not saying that, but maybe traffic control or something of that nature, that as we would for, like we did the parade the other day.
There's certainly a benefit to having designated personnel and alleviate that responsibility from the patrol teams, so I do understand what you're saying there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was on the floor, everybody understood it. Okay? Ammunition prices?
So the most significant thing that impacted this line was that at the end of this fiscal year, we saw a variety of savings in different accounts. COVID impacted operations, we were able to save money in a couple of different lines, and we were able to implement a firearm transition program this year that we had intended to do next, and that was originally planned for the capital improvement plan for next year. So we bought some ammo ahead of time, and it reduced the line this year.
Okay, great.
Do we ever have ammo that's outdated?
Not that I'm aware of. So we typically have a two-year stockpile of ammo, so we're, we're using it. It doesn't sit around and like dust at all.
Okay. Explain the weapons line.
Same as I just described, having purchased the, oh, okay. So we were able to do the firearms project a little bit earlier, and it, it then reduces the potential for having to replace firearms that are older or repair firearms that are older. And the amount of money that's left in there right now is if, if, when we get a new officer to come on, purchasing that firearm and any kind of basic repairs until we get switched over to the nine millimeters, which will be in September.
So this is just the, the cut from 13.5 to 2,000 is because you had some savings that you had realized, and that's why that cut was able to be made?
And we implemented that transition program in 2021 instead of 2022.
Okay.
But it happened just in the last six weeks or so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, you're going from 45 to nine millimeter. Do you have two years' worth of 45 caliber ammunition to dispose of or sell, or?
We do, and part of the 13.5 that was originally budgeted for this program included a sellback and a trade-in on both the firearms that we have in our inventory and the ammunition that we have in our inventory. So the project, I don't know, maybe 2021,000, but we were getting reimbursement on selling back the old guns and ammo.
Okay.
Uniforms.
Uniforms.
So explain uniforms.
All right. So I'll, I'll start with a brand-new officer. To completely outfit a brand-new officer, it's about $11,500 for the uniforms and equipment that are, is on his belt. If we hire a replacement officer, new uniforms for that person's about $2,600. The, the outfit that they're wearing needs to be replaced every year to two. I mean, they get three outfits that they wear 182 days a year, and, and it's out in the element. So we replace their three different uniforms, we replace their boots annually, the boots are $125 apiece, the three sets of uniforms are about $600 apiece. So replacement uniforms for staff comes out to be about $15,000 or $16,000. Ballistic vests are $770 apiece, and we purchase between like five and seven a year, so there's $3,500, $4,000 a year towards ballistic vests. The new hires, so $38,000, I think it's $38,000, comes quick. $35,000.
Okay. Explain contracted services. I'm assuming this is other, not the 911.
Yeah, the other. What's, what's the other?
So this involves access to various criminal justice information systems, it involves our-
Like LexisNexis or Westlaw?
TLO, LexisNexis, DCI through the state.
Okay.
It's our records management system, it's access to the CAD, it's the, the firm that does our pre-hire medicals and screenings, it's our body cameras and in-car cameras, 800 megahertz radio system, the random drug testing we do for our officers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Does that still include the, there was a legal service for the police department?
That's separate. So Smith Rogers, Aldridge, we pay $5,700 a year to them. They are, they specialize in law enforcement services, and they provide 24/7/365 access. We employ them 25 times a year, so do we call in, and our, our sergeants can call them at any time after hours, and they are exceptionally responsive. They just have a skill set that is very specific to law enforcement services.
Okay. Well, you had it down next, Smith Rogers. Why the cut in SERT, sir?
Yeah, so the SERT team, a lot of the items that they use will come through other operational lines, like their uniforms. On occasion, they will need specialized equipment of some sort. And this year, the specialized equipment that we're asking for, for their unit, is in the capital line. So there's $5,000 included in the capital budget for some surveillance-type equipment that you will see.
Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Okay. Fire.
Recognize the fire chief to respond to these questions.
Oh, sorry, Kristen. Volunteer pay. Explain volunteers getting paid.
It may be as easy to tell you what it doesn't include as what it does include, so if you'll allow me to explain how that kind of works. So, so our volunteer members, we require an enormous amount of training, call participation, duty crew time. But unfortunately, due to the Fair Labor Standards Act, we're not allowed to pay them any amount, dollar amount, at like an hourly rate or what have you. So there's, there's no compensation at an hourly rate that we can provide. If we did, they would be employees and not volunteers, if that, if that makes sense. So many years ago, the, the board decided to compensate volunteers, a pay-per-call system, a turnout compensation program. And it's aimed at reimbursing the volunteer for fuel, clothing that may be damaged, in order just to offer some compensation to offset expenses. So the, what you see reflected in the budget is the amount of money is based on the 20 volunteers that we try to maintain and that pay-per-call compensation that they receive.
What do they get? Yeah, what do they get paid per call?
$9.
$9? Hasn't went, hasn't went up much from the 70s, it used to be $5.
Yeah, it is not, unfortunately, it is not going. And the last increase that we provided to the firefighters, we learned that was taxable income, even though the way it was done, so we gave them an increase. We were, we were trying to pay them $8 per call, and when we took the taxes out, they were actually making even less. So we increased it a dollar so we could offset the, the taxes. So they've been making the same thing for a long, long time.
And then again, just to be clear about the budget, the fringe benefits is so that the volunteers get the, the T-shirts and the outfits that they need?
That's right. Exactly. It's T-shirts, it does kind of things, but it's also membership in like, for example, the State Firemen's Association, those type things are also included, which provides them some accidental death and dismemberment insurance and those type things, and opportunity to be, for scholarships and that type thing through the association, but that's the kind of thing, as well as a monthly meal we provide.
Now, I have a question that maybe Chief Boykin might, you know, both of you might have an answer for, maybe just Joe. The, does the enterprise contract lower the vehicle maintenance lines any for us? Are, are we going to see that? Is that anticipated?
That's the idea. The, I think the reality is that the number of vehicles that we can use that Enterprise provides is relatively small. So we're looking at five vehicles for this coming year in the Enterprise, and that's probably the max for the type of vehicle that we can use. Enterprise provides typically a, a consumer type of vehicle, so we're not going to be able to use Enterprise for police cruisers, we're not going to be able to use them for public works equipment or-
I give them a crew cab?
There, there are some exceptions that we can use. But again, that they are so small that while in theory they will lower the maintenance costs, you, you won't see it as a budget because it's such a small drop in the pond, so to speak.
Thank you.
EMS water, sewer, now the EMS, East Wake EMS is gone?
Sure. So with the preparation of the budget, the status of the Eastern Wake EMS facility had not been completely decided, as of, we're still working through that now, as everybody knows. The amount you see in the budget is a minimal amount just to maintain power, water, that type thing on the building until that final use is determined. So we, we put some money in there to cover those, those basic utilities. With the building not being occupied, we're not expecting it to be a whole lot of cost.
Okay.
Materials and supplies.
So our materials and supplies are very similar to what Chief Boykin described. It's a somewhat of a catch-all for us. It's janitorial supplies. We do our own janitorial work in our station. It's expendable materials such as firefighting foam, the absorbents we use on motor vehicle accidents, fire prevention supplies, plastic hats, coloring books, that type thing. Other equipment, you know, batteries and medical oxygen, all of that falls into our supplies category. The only other thing that I'll mention that comes out of that as well is what we have referred to in the past, and the county likes to refer to as small capital, which is stuff like replacement chainsaws or replacement fan, items that, they're, quite honestly, they're expensive, but they're not typically categorized as capital items because they're, they're small in nature. So those are the kind of things that get kind of rolled into the materials and supplies.
Oh. Question I had is where does most of our overtime come from?
So the, great question. So for our employees to work their scheduled number of hours, there's overtime built into that. Unfortunately, there's more hours in the day than the Fair Labor Standards Act will let us pay for without paying overtime. So there's a built-in amount of overtime just for the employees to work the number of hours they need to work. And then this year includes coverage of all of those hours, which includes that 10th day, which was listed as an expansion to this year's budget. And it's, again, it's just covering the number of hours in the day for our employees. Very little of that would be callback training and that kind of thing, because we typically try to minimize how much our employees have to come back when they're off duty. We try to give them as much training while they're working as we can.
So just to help me understand that, an employee shift is how many hours?
24 hours.
So they run a 24-hour shift, and they run it, then they're off?
They work 24 hours, and they're off 24, work 24, off 24, and then work 24, and then they're off four days. They work in, it may-
How much of that actually, what I'm trying to get at is how much of that actually pushes into overtime?
So the employee who works the bare minimum number of hours is going to work at least four hours. One, two of the shifts are going to work at least four hours of overtime per employee. One shift, well, under the new program, will work about 28 hours of overtime per, per work cycle. So that's where, there, and that also involves, just for your information, that's based on a 56-hour work week, where all of our, myself included, work a 40-hour work week. All of our shift employees, we're allowed to work them 56 hours before they're eligible for overtime.
Okay. And, well, the motivation for my questioning was there was some questions about Wake County EMS, and their overtime, and I don't know if you're familiar with any of that or not. That's not for this.
And, and it all deals with calculation of those hours over. What, what makes emergency service payroll complicated is employees start work on one day and they end work on the next day?
Right.
And that's, that's where the, that's where the come, the, the hard part comes, is how many hours in an actual day, and especially when you have holidays and such as that, you know, employees actually working two hours, two days at the same time.
Well, that's their problem, not ours.
That's right. Yes, sir, I agree, sir.
Yeah, how does the Fair Labor's Overtime Act employ for EMS or fire? Typically, it's a 40-hour work week within a seven-day timeframe, but how does it work with a fireman?
So it's two, if you look at it from a weekly perspective, it's 56 hours instead of 40, and that's because they're allowed to sleep part of their shift. The, the Fair Labor Standards Act goes in, and it specifically defines the job responsibilities. And it's basically, if, if you meet those responsibilities and meet those, that criteria, for example, that, the sleeping, for example, then you're up, you're, you can work, be required to work more hours before the time and a half overtime kicks in. And that's, that's exactly what we're using. If you take some organizations who do not, that use different ways, and they're, for example, EMS, they may, they may apply it in different ways, but for fire, it's, it's a 56-hour work week, it's a standard week.
Yeah. One further question then, if they're on a fire call and their shift runs out, so they stay on that fire call, do they get overtime?
That's, either overtime or compensation, or comp time. We'll issue them one or the other at time and a half when it's over. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions on fire? Thank you. Chief? All right. Parks and Rec.
Recognize the Parks and Rec director.
Okay. They want to know about your overtime.
Yes. So I'm the only employee in our department that is exempt, so busy times of the year for us are always spring, summer, and then the holidays. And like, well, I'm gonna use the example of the downtown tree lighting. That's a week it takes a lot of staff hours to prepare for, to make sure that it runs smooth, and it's a long day, and it's an all-hands-on-deck type of situation. All of the employees that work in our department would be required that week to work over 40 hours, so we would have to compensate them either through comp time or overtime. As standard rule in our department, I require staff to submit notification to me in advance if they expect to work over 40 hours, and they're expected to first analyze whether or not their work week could be flexed, or if there was another way to minimize the opportunity to exceed 40 hours. But because of the nature of our job, sometimes that's just not possible. The, the challenge for us with deciding whether to do comp time or overtime is, and I'm gonna stay with that example of the downtown tree lighting, but then my entire staff will accumulate comp time, and then they're all gonna want to have to, or they all have to take it off. And so then, we're putting more challenges on the rest of our staff to continue to meet the needs of our citizens. And so we, we don't, I, I personally don't like to see an amass of comp time throughout our department because of the burden it does put on the other staff members with the limited staffing that we have and the amount of services that we provide. So, I mean, we have that option of comp time versus overtime, there are a lot of times we'll use that if it is effective, so if it's just something random happened and, say, there was a last-minute call-out, we had that situation last week where an employee at the community center had a medical emergency in their family, so one of the full-time staff members had to work- in their family, so one of the full-time staff members had to work over that 40 hours unexpectedly on the day of. That's an example where we would, we could use comp time because it might not impact significantly other employees.
Do you have an expiration time on the comp time before it gets paid out?
Yeah. So I believe what policy says is there's a certain amount of comp time that can be accrued. So like, an employee could accrue at least, it's 80 hours? Yeah, they can accrue 80 hours before it rolls over. And personally, I, I can't afford for an employee to amass 80 hours of comp time. We'd be hurting.
But you, but you would make them take it within a given timeframe?
Yeah. So it, ours, I don't believe our comp policy says they have to use that comp time within a certain amount of time or it expires. I mean, once they've earned it, they've earned it. It, what will happen is when they hit over 80, like, it can't exceed 80. So then I would be required to tell, like, then they have to take time off if they continue to amass comp time.
And so the decrease from even, you know, the 2021 amended budget and then the requested budget from 4,500 to 1,000 is just you anticipating perhaps better employee budgeting for anticipated comp time?
That's coming from a couple of different areas. One of that is, you know, we're coming out of COVID, and so there are some things where we're still navigating and not sure if we can do. So that's where we were being extremely conservative there. Also, this is not something that our department, prior to me coming here, they weren't as strategic in that realm of planning for comp time and overtime. And, I mean, we're just getting so busy, and as we come with this master plan, I, you know, I just have a high expectation for us to move forward, and I just can't afford the comp time. So that, I think that, that change in overtime is really just a COVID recognition, but I would anticipate that to grow moving forward.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. The next two, actually, is part-time community center and then it says part-time parks maintenance versus subcontractors.
Sure. I'll start with the community center. So shared in the last year's budget process, part of the master plan has included a staff and operational assessment. Some of you, I think I've even had one-on-one conversations about how the community center is operated. The community center has relied heavily on your professional level staff, your program level staff to, for the day-to-day operations, for answering the phones, checking in participants, taking funds, registering participants, things like that. Those are all very important things to do, but all of the time that is dedicated to that and cleaning the facility is time where we're not planning and implementing programs and services to our community. So part of that assessment, you know, that stood out in the assessment, and there were four things that the consultant came in and said that needed to change if we were really going to grow our services. And one of those things was making sure that we are better utilizing part-time staff for frontline tasks, like we just described, and freeing up the professional level staff in order to push out more programs. And so, and to further that, as we continue to navigate this master plan in our transition, we're expecting a retirement next year. So you saw in our budget memo that we're looking to restructure our staff. There's going to be a huge push from our department to expand programs outside of the community center. So we're going to be looking to expand beyond that campus to do more things out in the community and to engage our citizens more. And so with that, an extent, an expansion of your part-time staff is going to be necessary to cover just your operating hours. And then the part-time maintenance versus, okay. So there is a balance of working with subcontractors versus having to have somebody on hand. There are things where working with a subcontractor is going to be great, and that's that you're going to come on Tuesday and you're going to cut the grass here on Tuesday. You're going to weed eat, do this, this, and this. But then our parks, to me, I view them as employees. They're the hardest-working employee that this town has. Sorry, police, fire, I think really great too. But, but they don't ever get a break, even when the park technically closes, there's still people out there using them, right? And so when you have a contractor, they're not going to be on call. They're not going to be here and be responsive no matter what. I ran into a situation myself where, you know, I took my kids to a program. We were at the park. Someone had ripped a sign, a metal sign and stake, and it was a puncture issue. Like, if a child fell on it, it would have been an issue. There is no guarantee if you contracted out your parks maintenance from a full-time or part-time that when you make that phone call, anybody's going to respond to you because they have other contracts that they're working on. So we're always going to have some level of responsibility from part-time staff and full-time staff when it comes to parks maintenance. But whenever there are opportunities, we are looking for them. So you see that in this budget. So we contracted out your basic landscaping for parks that we could. We did not do that for, like, our joint-use parks because there's a lot of technicalities and things we have to be careful of when we're working on school grounds. And we also have proposed, like, contracted cleaning of our restroom facilities. That's a very deep clean on a regular basis, but that doesn't mean that when they're not there, we don't still have to go there multiple times a day to make sure there's toilet paper or that there's not a mess or anything like that that we need to clean up. Your litter sweep, I mean, we're still going to have to do that. You're getting, you know, your, your greenway is going to be, that one and a half miles really equates just under four acres of parkland. But that's not parkland like Gil Street Park where I can go stand there and kind of get a good glimpse of what's going on. You actually have to walk or ride the entire length of it. Does that answer your question about the, that balance?
Everybody okay with that? Okay. So it's where is Arbor Day? I guess that's special events.
What was that question? I'm sorry.
The question is where is Arbor Day? If we're a Tree City, it needs to have a line item.
Okay. So Arbor Day, it, well, the Tree City USA program is, is a collaboration between our Tree Board, the Public Works Department, and the Parks and Rec Department. And it, those funds used to be in the Public Works Department. They were transferred over to Parks and Rec when we took over the Tree Board. And so there were, the Tree City USA budget was about $1,400 to $1,500 each year. And that, those funds were used to purchase and plant the trees that were done. So that amount is incorporated into the park landscaping budget currently. It's not its own line item, but it is there. But our intent with not just Arbor Day, but just Tree City USA as part of it also, but nature education and environmental education at large, we're going to have a stronger push for that. And so Arbor Day, we're going to be looking to do more than what's been done in the past. So, and we want to incorporate it into some partnerships that we have potential for and larger, you know, more ongoing educational program opportunities. And so those are in your cultural and recreational programs budget line.
So Arbor Day as well, that, that's the line item?
Yeah. And we're, we're hoping to be able to plan something a little bit more substantial than what's done in years past.
Okay.
Everybody okay?
Yep.
Okay. If we're getting out of maintenance, why equipment maintenance?
You're never, we're not out of maintenance, kind of like, as we shared before, we're always going to have to be in maintenance. We still currently maintain two joint-use parks. We still currently maintain all of our athletic fields and our nature areas. We also have to be responsive. We're taking on the greenway, which is not contracted. So where it may seem that we've gotten out of maintenance, you're continuing to grow. Your recreation services are continuing to grow. Responsibilities on the Parks and Rec Department have, or some of them are being transferred from Public Works to Parks and Rec Department. So, I mean, you've not really gotten out of the maintenance business, and we're still, I mean, if there's opportunity where we don't need a piece of equipment moving forward, we won't replace it. But right now, we still need everything we've got.
Tree lighting.
In the budget. We're hoping to move forward with it. We got lots of questions about it. So we're looking forward to moving forward with it. Were there any specific questions?
I don't remember what we were, why, why that came up to you.
It's there.
I think some of the questions were, we were trying to get into more of a public-private partnership and wondered how we could help move some of this over to civic groups or greater involvement because you guys really carried the burden two years ago, and we need to get help doing this.
Yeah. So I think it's pretty standard for a community to have, like, a couple of flagship big events that they lead, and then they bring in some nonprofits and civic groups to help with certain pieces of it, which, I mean, I, I think our department, I mean, there's always room to grow and to expand that. We're looking for that. And so that's something we'll always be looking to do. We've tried to incorporate them into our events in the past, and we'll continue to do that. I think here, there's a lot of potential on some other things that you're hearing from the community already that they want, and some of your, your businesses downtown are wanting to accomplish. And so that's something that our department has been talking with our DAC coordinator about how, you know, we can work with them and maybe some of these events, you know, we can work together on.
But I think when Larry and I were talking about that, there, and maybe it's someplace in here that we missed, there is not, not a line item that we found that kind of captures, you know, if there are two events that we enter into that, that are a public-private partnership, the town is still going to be incurring fees. And I know that it's probably super hard to guesstimate what those might be, but is there going to be a repository anywhere within the budget, whether it's, if it's not this year, next year, so that we have an idea of what those costs might be? Or, you know, because if that happens this year, where are we going to pull that money from?
Right. So what we've been working to do, and just COVID really messed things up, and now as our businesses downtown are growing and starting to do more events, and we're hearing more from them, the current special events budget line has about $1,400 of community requested event support. You're not going to see that broken out on your list. It's part of that lump sum of special events. So there's about $1,400 that have just been earmarked off to the side. So what the Events Committee and our DAC Coordinator, what we're working through right now is developing a process that we can, because like, right, we had one that reached out to us, and they want to do something every month, sometimes twice a month. And there's just a lot involved in that. So what we want to do is put in a process where quarterly there can be requests for our support for events, and then that be something that we can bring to you guys. So it might be something mid-year where they're asking for something really substantial. Like, if they want to close down a Rendell Avenue, that $1,400 isn't going to touch it. Right? But if they want our help. And so we'll be able to move that, through that, together.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. Cultural and rec programs.
I think that you answered that with, you said that that's where things like Arbor Day are going to fall?
Yeah. So cultural recreation programs, that's going to also fall in that realm of where we're trying to push out into the community. So like, we'll have popsicles in the park starting this Friday, and that'll be every other week. The Gil Street Neighborhood Picnic that we did pre-COVID, we're going to want to do two of those. Just get our programs out and engage with the community a little bit more. So it also includes some programs that we want to offer downtown, nature programs, and then our rec on-the-go initiative.
Team uniforms.
The, it seems like there's an awful lot of money that we spend on providing team uniforms. And I, I had this in my head, and perhaps it was not correct, that at one point, the sponsors helped shoulder some of the cost of the team uniforms.
Yeah. So this past year, we actually doubled the revenue projection of sponsorships with only having one athletic season. So we actually brought in $8,000 this past year just for our spring sports. That comes close to covering the cost of the team uniforms, but not 100%. That is not reflected, like, we don't come back to you, because we have to buy those uniforms if we're going to have a true league. So we don't come back to you mid-season and ask for a budget reallocation. So we budget that we're going to have this expense. We also budget for revenue. We just were really fortunate this year, and we hope that continues.
But it's, it's $22,000. So is that including other, like, the camps and T-shirts that are, or is that 22 grand is just outfitting the uniforms for the teams?
That's your spring sports, your fall sports, basketball. Just off the top of my head, I don't have the number in front of me, but off the top of my head, our spring sports team uniforms was $9,000, or eight, between $8,000 and $9,000, I think. The amount of money in, and granted, I mean, that, so we raised just about in sponsorship funds to cover that cost of team uniforms. That's not always been the case in the past. So we hope that we can do that every league, but I can't guarantee that. And I don't want to surprise anybody if we don't raise that. But I mean, just, we're, we're expecting, we're coming out of COVID, and we're also expecting our community's growing. We're expecting more people to register for our programs. So there is a little bit of more than what it's cost in the year past just because we're expecting our program participation to grow.
And so as these teams gain their sponsorships from, you know, whether it's Triane Dentistry or wherever, that's going to reduce the amount that the town has to spend on these, on the uniforms, correct? And then where does that money go?
So we're still, we, we still spend that money. So those sponsors aren't going out and buying that uniform. We still are cutting that purchase order and paying for that. But that sponsorship fund is going directly into the general fund. So it's just like the athletic payment, just like the, or the registration fee. That's going into the general fund, so are the sponsorship fees. And that's how it's gone in years past. Like, there's some program, or some things that we get sponsorship money for mid-year where we come to you to get things reallocated. But team uniforms has always been, or league sponsorship has always gone directly to the general fund and budgeted for in the budget process.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's part of the problem, I guess, in reading this. This comments a little bit more for Joe, I guess. But this just shows the expenditure, so you have to come back and figure the offsetting revenues, like what you're talking about. It'd be nice, I think, to be able to see that, okay, $22,000, sub-note, X number of dollars, offset by X number of revenue or whatever. So we don't just look at it as, oh, hey, we're spending $22,000, but we need to know the offsets. I think that's useful information when you're reading the budget. Okay. Athletic lines. I don't know what that question is. Larry? Hannah? Somebody?
I'm looking.
Okay. Me too here.
Oh, it just, it just says athletics.
Says athletic lines. So, oh, you're saying, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the athletic line, athletics-
No, I get it. I get it. Yes. I see what you're saying. All right.
Because it's, you know, requested was 40,000. It's directly under the cultural and rec program line?
Yeah.
And then it's 26,000 that was actually requested?
Right. So we reduced the request. One, we were trying to be budget-conscious there. It was a nicety, not a necessity. But our goal was to relocate our rec league basketball games to Zebulon Middle School's gym to give us- to give us an improved atmosphere. I mean, actually, if you've ever been there, when we're transitioning between basketball games, it's just, it's a challenge. It overwhelms that building. You can't run other programs. So it was one of those things, if we could make it happen, it would make an overall impact on the experience to our participants. So we would love to do that. I still would love to do that. But we recognize this year just might not be the year to make that transition.
And so that, so that was the $13,200 that was going to go toward, to the Zebulon Elementary to, for use of?
Yeah, so we actually pay communities and schools to rent the facilities at Zebulon Middle School. But I believe, yes, that is what that amount was.
All right.
So that's actually gym rental, is what it is?
Yeah, which, like, I've talked to several of our nearby neighbors. I mean, they all run into that. It's a high expense, but one of our Eastern Wake counterparts, they pay about $100,000 just renting gyms so they can play their basketball league. So, I mean, it's a, it's a challenge we all have.
Okay, what money is spent through the advisory board line item?
You already answered that. She already answered that.
Oh, she did, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Park landscape.
Just one second. So that is... Whitley Park, Gil Street Park, Little River Park, Zebulon Community Park. Is about 50,000 of that contracted. That's just your very basic mowing, weed eating, edging, bush trimming. If you've noticed, our trees in our park system have been limbed better. So I notice it more at Gil Street Park than anywhere else. The sightlines are much better than they used to be, and it creates a more inviting space. So that's what, 50,000 of that is for, and then 2,000 are beautification efforts in Arbor Day.
So that's, that's different than the... So the park landscape is different than the contract with ZCC landscaping? That's $67,000?
So that... So the community center landscaping piece of that 30,000, that was something that the Public Works Department, because they currently maintain the community center. So that was something, a pricing that was shared with us on what the anticipated cost would be to contract out some of that and to maintain to the same level that it currently is. I mean, whether it's in that contracted line or moved to the park landscape.
So the, so the grounds maintenance for the Zebulon Community Center is 67 grand, and then the other park may, landscaping is 52? Am I understanding that?
The grounds maintenance line includes a lot more than that community center.
Well, because the note says contract.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And it'd be helpful if those two were listed right beside each other. Because as you go through the budget, you see landscaping maintenance, and then you go down, and all of a sudden, you see more landscaping maintenance. It was kind of confusing.
Yeah, I can check with Bobby. That's probably based upon when that budget line was created. Like back, you know, we'll say 20 years ago, they started that grounds maintenance line. So that would be my assumption as to why that separation is there in the numbering.
Any other questions? Thank you. All right, public works.
Yeah, I think I've got enough to be dangerous on this one, so I'll try. Because some of the changes are things that I implemented. Just get caught up on the page.
Tell me when you're ready.
Okay.
First one is why are salaries broken into two line items?
All right, so to follow up on what Sheila just shared with you, we're working with a budget whose structure has been in place for 10, 15 years. And based on some of the questions that we got tonight, it's probably high time we reformat it. But anyway, when it came to public works, the, there was five different departmental units, and there was a position spread through all of them. And as, as a manager, it was very hard for me to track where our costs were going. Individually, the subsections of public works didn't look like we were spending a lot of money. But when you grouped them all together, we were spending a lot of money, particularly per full-time employee. So I needed to figure out a way to assign who we were paying as far as employees and where to put them. So that's what the property and project management and the operations division were set up, just as a way to put employees, unlike police or fire, everyone who's a firefighter, everyone who's a police officer is in that department. With public works, I had employees spread out all over the place. And so this was a way to keep me honest in knowing, okay, who are the employees in this part of the public works department? Who are the employees in the other parts of the public works budget? And I'll, I'll jump ahead to the fifth bullet point. Why no 2019, 2020 actuals? Because we had things spread out in so many different ways. When I combined some things, they just didn't match up. And so it was really hard to track a 2019, 2020 data, because they were spread in so many different categories. So we could, we could parse it out, we can look for it. But that's what it was, is because I combined a bunch of departments that weren't there before.
So moving forward, that's going to be cleaned up, and we're going to actually be able to see what the actuals were?
That's exactly the reason behind it, yep.
Okay, I'm going to phrase this question. It says stadium expenses, and why, what I would rather have everybody hear is the ownership ratios, what we're responsible for, and why, and therefore, what Wake County pays versus what we pay.
Yeah, it's a, it's an 85-15% split. We're essentially responsible for things outside of the building. So talking about materials and supplies on the next bullet point, we're responsible for grating and stoning the parking lot. We're also responsible for the utilities, which is why the utilities is broken out there.
So, but the amount of time that we're contractually able to use the stadium is not an 85-15 split, correct?
What's that question again? I'm, I'm sorry.
We can use it, what, five times a year, the town itself, if we need?
Outside of season, yeah.
Outside of season. But yet we're shouldering 15% of those expenses?
Well, as Joe explained, we, we pay the, we maintain outside of the stadium. Now, water and sewer is something else we need to talk about in just a second. But I think Wake County spent, what, a million and a half down there this year?
The 85-15 really comes from when we merged in 2003, our back to the, with Wake County ownership. That was a calculation made about the investment that Wake County had in it and what the town had in it at the time. So that was roughly the ownership share. So basically, if we had 100% of the stadium, the county had invested at 85% of that funds at that time. We had about 15%. And so that's where that relation, uh, ratio comes from. We also took that, so if they made 85% of it, they should be paying approximately 85%. So what we've done is divide the expenses that are interior to the stadium that they maintain. We also took, tried to take a look at the, the skill set that your public works department had. At the time, we had water and sewer, so it made sense for us to maintain water and sewer stuff. It made sense that parking lot maintenance is going to be something that took regular maintenance on it. We were closer for proximity. We could come maintain that a little quicker. We had the skill set for that. It made sense for Wake County to do inside, because they had electricians on staff. They had HVACs people, they had plumbers. So we tried to use a little bit of a common sense approach, and also an 85-15 split to look at the duties and responsibilities.
And coming up with that 85-15%, where was Bryant's equity at?
That was, that was, that was totally separate, because that was personal property that he owned and potentially could sell. This was the pieces that were, if you turned the stadium upside down and shook it, there's a rule of thumb we don't we gave, that would be the pieces that the town and the county owned.
Got you.
No, Mr. Bryant's were separate.
Yeah, so when he sold the, when he sold the business to Milwaukee, then basically, that's part of what they got, was what he personally owned and transferred.
And we anticipate that 20,000 water sewer will probably drop in half with the merger? Is that kind of a gut feel?
Sir, there is going to be a, you know, significant drop, you know? Just like, we feel like each resident is going to see about a $50, a $50 drop in their residential bills here. So we're expecting a fairly significant drop there also.
Does that answer everybody's question? You, you asked about the five events. My understanding is that that contract is not just with Zebulon, it's with Zebulon and Wake County.
That is correct, sir.
So that goes to them as well. I don't know that they've ever used it. We originally had a, what we called a sports authority that was supposed to help manage that and bring in events. The problem was that, as explained to me, was that it was in that middle slot. It was too big for certain events and too small for other events. And so that created a real problem. Now, there were some events that did come in in the past, some music events that came in offseason that... But if you think about it, you know, you really don't have a heck of a lot of window. Your best window is September, October, you know? But nonetheless, yes, they're available for, for us to do something down there. I don't know how to elaborate on that any further, if y'all have any questions.
Could I entertain the idea that we invite the Wake County group here to present to us with what their plans are? Because I'd say here, they supposedly are working on things, but nothing happens. And it sets, it sets vacant 300 nights a year, or 300 days a year.
We have a pretty much standing working relationship with them in far as capital facility improvements. We have invited them in the past to do, for upgrades and stuff. We haven't done one, that's when I think actually the presentation here was done on a facility base. But it was probably a couple of years ago, just to give an update when they were doing the video board and all. But we can always invite them back to share some long-range planning, facility improvements they project and stuff. And I'll be glad, or Joe will be glad to reach out to them and ask them at a future work session, maybe to give us an update where their long-range planning is from a capital standpoint.
That'd be a great idea.
The parking lot ticket fees, where does that go?
Just to the Mudcats. The only revenue the towns oven gets for the stadium is a proportionate share of the 85-15 of rent proceeds.
And that is a very reasonable rate.
From the ball team itself?
Ma'am?
From the ball team itself?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay.
They rent the facility.
Correct. Where is that located in the schedules?
It should be in the revenue line items. I'd have to, I'm sorry, I ain't got my book in front of me. But yes, that, we get roughly, roughly around $30,000 a year. And so 85-15% of that is, we, we collect the 15%. It's a pass-through from the county. County actually gets, builds it, collects it, and that piece is passed through to us.
Okay, because I just, I didn't see it when I was going through the schedules. Like, I didn't, maybe I just missed it?
I know it's on the schedule, I just, Bobby's looking at it.
Probably around 4,500.
Yeah, it's very, yeah.
And it's called, and it's labeled as Mudcats?
On B5.
On D5?
B5.
It says, lease payments baseball.
At the very bottom of the page.
Okay.
4,500. Just to note, last year, we didn't get anything, because they had no season. So there's a stipulation where if there's no season, they pay no rent, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, materials and supplies, that's probably.
Yeah, Joe's saying basically, that's the stone for the parking lot, that's roundup for the parking lot, spraying for grass. It is maybe painting the pole bases, or any miscellaneous pieces that we might need to maintain the parking lot or the water and sewer system out there.
And when you do travel and training, does that include like, training on the proper usage of roundup? And things like that?
Yes, ma'am. We actually have five guys that are licensed with the state of North Carolina for rideaways and property. So they have five of them have certification. Anybody that does not is spraying under those licenses. And we're required under our stormwater permit to track locations, where we spray, how much we spray every day that we are obligated.
And so we have folks that are registered for pesticide, and then folks that are registered for herbicide?
Yep.
Okay, all right, cool.
And they're required to get continuing training each year.
Okay.
Okay, why hasn't building and grounds maintenance been contracted out?
It has. And if you look at... So if you look at FY 2020 actual?
What page are you on?
I'm on B15.
Okay.
There. You'll see, we spent 69,000. The following year was 28,000. So this year, we're at 24,000. So we're, we're roughly staying the same. Let me mention a couple of things. The only thing that we're marginally picking up this year as far as contracting out is we've added the Zebulon Community Center to the contractor that is also helping out with our parks. The thing that you need to know that, when we contract out, we're not doing it to save money. We are probably, from a cost standpoint, effective, if not more effective than contracting out. The reason we are contracting out is because we need to dedicate some human resources and effort to our stormwater system. So we're trying to free up the personnel that we've got to focus on things like stormwater. And we can contract out landscaping, so we are contracting landscaping.
Question? Okay, do we have radios that we don't use?
Have we addressed that question earlier?
I thought you did too. But does that answer anything else you may have about our radio system and how it's used?
No, I think you answered it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. That's all of the departments. I guess the next thing would be... The CIP. Do you want to go through that? Are there any, any items in the CIP?
Yes.
Okay.
On E4... We did receive, is there a reason why we still have that $28,000 for the UTV since we received one from East Wake EMS?
Yeah, because this was crafted before that came about.
So we can take out that $28,000?
You, you can do it that way. So when you, when you adopt the budget, you can take the $28,000 off of?
Fleet management?
Yeah. Bobby, would you list that as under the fire capital? Is that where you would have that? Yeah, okay. So when you look at your budget ordinance, if you had adopted a budget ordinance with that reduction, that hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred? You would just subtract that amount. Police chief just shared with me, we are going to need some, some money to upfit that vehicle. So another option is you can approve this budget amount. And then when we're done upfitting that, we can come back to you with a budget adjustment.
But we can, she can also find out what the, what it's going to cost to upfit and then just come with a budget request?
Can do it that way.
Okay, perfect. So we take the twenty-eight thousand dollars off of, I'm looking on E four, so I'm not sure exactly where that needs to come from then?
Yeah, so on your budget ordinance. And you would be looking at page A four.
I'm sorry?
You would be looking at page.
Can I, can I stop just a minute? Can I make a motion to approve the budget? And then when they, when you have something like that, we can, I'm not saying we take anything off right now. We know some will come off. But you can come back anytime and, and take it off and put it where else it needs to go?
You need to take it off or put it on hold, either one.
Put that money on hold?
And you can do that with other things. I was going to explain that when we finish. I think your motion is a bit premature if in fact you're making it.
I think we've been through this whole book.
I understand. My opinion.
And mine.
That you're premature because we have not finished going through the budget to understand what these people are interested in. But you've made a motion, so I'll ask if there's a second. Motion died for lack of a second. Okay. Anything else y'all had on that thing? I had that UTV as well.
I just don't, I don't understand the difference between the fire fleet reserve and the fleet and equipment reserve that's also on E four. And then in addition, while we're on E four, you had said something about the public works crew cab that they wanted and that possibly that could be obtained through Enterprise?
So I'll answer the, I'll need you to repeat the first question. So I'll answer this. It's all right. I'll answer the second one first. We've already purchased a crew cab. I don't know if that's what you're referring to.
The forty-five thousand dollars for the, for the FY twenty-two says public works crew cab?
Oh.
Is that another crew cab?
Yeah, we can, I don't think Enterprise is going to be able to provide that type of vehicle. The other thing that's proven to be true with Enterprise is their backlog is quite substantial. We're waiting months on end for these vehicles to arrive. So anyway, the crew cab that you're referring to. This is, this is not something I think that you can, we can add to the Enterprise fleet.
Okay.
Now, I need to, what was the first question again?
Oh, I just didn't understand what the difference was between the fire fleet reserve and it says placed into savings to purchase next pumper. So every year we're putting money in to purchase a pumper truck down the road?
Yeah, so here, here's, so if you remember a couple of my presentations, when we went through, when the, with our, when our property tax base shrank and we also reduced the property tax rate, we stopped investing in things. And one of the things that we stopped investing in is our fire equipment.
Right.
And so now we're in a position where, let's see if I get the year right. In two thousand twenty-seven, we're going to have to replace another fire engine. Which is good timing because the payments that we're making on the fire engine we've got right now are going to end.
Right.
So we're good on that. But then, two years after that, we have to replace another fire engine. And so what we're doing is we raised the tax rate enough to not only make the payments on the current fire engine, and then when we retired the debt on that, make the payments on the second fire engine and just save a little bit of money each year so that by the time twenty twenty-nine comes around, we can buy that third engine outright.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Okay. And, but the second engine that we're going to need in two thousand twenty-seven, will we be able to purchase that one outright then as well?
We'll take out loan payments. So we'll, we'll pay off the engine we've got. We'll start new loan payments on that second one.
And then the third one will be the one that we'll.
That we pay outright, yep.
Okay, all right. And then shortly further down, it says fleet and equipment reserve, a hundred thousand dollars. Is that somewhere doing something similar?
Yeah, so that's, that's dependent upon if you all approve a yard waste fee or not. We don't know how much money we're going to generate with a yard waste fee. But we're thinking that if you add that three dollars, that will generate around a hundred thousand dollars. And so we didn't want to force you all into committing to a fee increase. So for this first year, we just said, we'll put that money into reserve and that way we're not dependent upon it. If you do pass it, then we'll use those funds to do something like replace our leaf truck.
Okay, so that's down, so that's the orange yard waste fee of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So a hundred thousand of that would be going towards a new reefer down the road?
No, I'm sorry. I'm confusing things. So if you go further up the page and look under, what is that? That second gray bar that calls, that calls out medium duty? And you'll see a leaf truck there?
Oh, yes.
Okay, fifty thousand of that yard waste fee to go to that. And we don't know if we'll generate another hundred thousand, but a hundred thousand to go into a reserve account. So we anticipate, we don't know. I think this seems a little high, but we think generate a hundred and fifty thousand from that yard waste fee. Fifty of that would go to leaf truck payments, a hundred would be locked into reserves.
Or would this be for any fleet?
Yes.
In the future? It doesn't have to be relegated to public works or, and it's not going to be tied to something that has to be spent on, you know, because of the yard waste fee?
Well, that would be the intent. I try to, I try to match up fees with, with uses. You can get into kind of a grab-bag scenario real quick if you don't match up fees with our revenues with expenditures. So the intent would be to dedicate that to public works.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions on the CIP? I have a few, but I wanted to get y'all out first.
I have a question about the, on E five. The, the extent and scope of the card access and cameras for the community center. Because it seems like this is, this is a building where the public is going to be entering at all different times. Where are those, where's that fifty thousand dollars going to go as far as?
There's a lot of.
We're getting there.
Lot of not me's.
We're getting there. I was pointing to Sheila because she could talk to you about how that community center operates. That there's, there's some public access elements, but there's some that are not public access elements.
So I'm not as familiar with the actual breakdown of how much like the camera system versus access card is, so. But I can say, our camera system is very outdated. We have a lot of limitation in what we can see and both inside the community center and outside of the community center. And there's also, you know, there's, there's a responsibility that we have on our participants. And since we're in summer camp time, like that's one of the things that I think that we need to have a good understanding at all times as who's in the building, who's, who has access to the building, who has entered the building at a certain time. Just because there are a lot of coming and goings in that building, it is open to the public with the general operating hours. But having a really good understanding when, Monday morning when we come in, if something were to happen or something is triggered that the building has been accessed and we weren't anticipating it, knowing who that was, when it happened so that we can go back and look is, is a great peace of mind as we are continuing to operate and serve participants in our building. Did you want to talk about the breakdown of cameras first?
We had priced out to do access as well as cameras. And so what we asked them to do is to give us a ballpark figure of what the cost would be. And then when we've got that, we would determine at that point what the best use of that money would be. Whether it's going to be cameras or an extensive card access system or a hybrid. And we're anticipating it being a hybrid. We think the cameras are very, very important. And we couldn't afford to do all the cameras that we think are necessary as well as an extensive card access system.
And explain the card access system then. Would it just be to the offices? Or it's going to be tracking employees that come into the building?
All right.
You know, like when the building's open to the public?
It'll track the employees when they come in in the mornings and after the doors are locked in the evenings. It will also access into the office area. Those will be locked all the time. So that the public cannot enter them and the staff is, is safer.
Okay, all right.
It'll, it'll also, I mean, you've got four exterior doors. You've got one that is accessible, that's open to the general public during operating hours. But the other three doors, I mean, somebody could pop into the building and you not know it. And so that just helps us with that tracking.
So they would remain locked during operating hours unless someone swiped in with a key card? I'm just trying to understand how the system is going to work for the money that we're spending and in something that has a lot of community traffic already?
It will work just like this building where the side door is open to the public, but the front door and back door are locked so much that it's badge access. So it will work very similar in that form as far as badge access.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other, other thing? Well, I have a few questions, Joe. The, the Judd North of Rendell Signal, a hundred thousand. I'm assuming that that money is actually going into dedicated fund balance until such time as the final decision is made on the location of the fire station.
Now, this is, this would be design funds. And so if we're going to, I'm not saying that we would have to spend it, spend it this year. But if, if we're moving forward with a fire station design, we'll need to include the design of the signal at the time. So this is, these are design funds.
No, and I understand that. My point is, it seems a bit premature. So if it was just simply dedicated as a dedicated fund balance, doesn't mean that you would proceed this year with the engineering or the design unless we got to the point where we were moving on the fire station.
I think you're going to be moving on the fire station.
Maybe?
I think, that's my recommendation.
Okay, but we could put it in fund balance designated until such time.
Do we still have the design from earlier when we were talking about the fire station? Did that go back into dedicated fund balance? Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, that's, that, that, those funds have already been locked into fund balance.
Dedicated?
They're already there.
Okay.
But this is not?
This is not.
Okay, but it could be. Just put it in dedicated fund balance until such time as you know that study needs to occur. That's my recommendation, is the board do what they want to with it.
So you would, I gotta check with Bobby. Do we have a, a capital fund set up for the fire station? Okay. So what we would be doing is we would be dedicating these funds towards a capital fund for the fire station.
That's all I think, Joe. I just think it's a little premature to go out there and start doing design until we acquire the property and then, you know, the final decision is made by this board that yes, that's where they want to put the station.
Okay, this is, this is just the budget funds. We're not going to, we're not going to move forward designing a fire station until we have you all on board.
I understand that. And all I'm trying to do is make this match that.
And where is the Galaxo land purchase budgeted in here?
Okay, so if you, the different document, if you, if you go back and you look at your comprehensive annual financial report and you look at the fund balance page, you'll see the, the committed fund balances in there. So that, those funds are already locked in.
Yeah, I know we've got funds committed, not only from previous years, but also the sale of the old property. There was going to be a fire department at one time.
You've already recognized those funds this year and they've got, and they got rolled into that fund balance as well.
Yeah, but shouldn't that be in here as a, an expense, even though it's in the general fund or in the reserve fund?
No, because this is, this is just your existing budget and the capital improvement plan. The funds that are already locked in, that's in your financial report.
And it was six fifty?
Six fifty is what the total was. Was it a hundred and eighty we got from the sale?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing is, explain to me the Jones Street connector because there's a couple of possibilities there is what you're actually talking about. And I don't remember specifically. Was this to connect the open spaces on the, this would be on the east side of North of Rendell? Or was it the road going all the way through the park?
No, this is, this is to connect the gaps. So that would be the property behind Hillbillies.
It's on E one, Larry.
Yeah.
Okay, so would we connect, would we collect fees once those properties are developed to replenish this fund?
Yeah, we could.
Right now, what's built was built by the people that developed. So in this, in this case, I know that Hillbillies is closed now and I don't know what's going on with their property. They actually own the front and the back. They cut the back off so they wouldn't have to do that. But it seems to me that whoever develops it should bear the burden of the road improvement.
We would collect a payment in lieu from them.
I'm sorry, I'm having.
We would collect a payment in lieu from them.
Okay, so that would reimburse this money that we're expending.
Yeah, that, well, no, because, all right, look at the very far right, the, the notes. That three forty assumes we are getting developer contribution as well as support from DOT to do work at widening the ramp. So you should, I mean, I would love for us to come out ahead and not spend the three forty, but we should expect that we're going to spend three forty.
Okay, but, hold on.
Half of the road is not on those parcels. So that's part of it. Part of this project is also off-site. It's near the intersection of Dogwood and Rendell.
So you're figuring the three. So you're figuring the 340 is our share of the cost?
I am. And like I said, I would love to.
What's the total cost projected for the front?
Excuse me?
What's the total cost projected?
Oh, I'd have to go back and look at the notes. I want to say four, maybe four, 425.
Are we gonna have to front the 425? Or are we gonna hold this and do the work once some developer comes along?
I think you need to front. I think the, I think the situations on the Rendell corridor are getting very bad. So we've got to do something in the way of relief out there.
I understand that, Joe. What I'm trying to do is understand the flow of money on it. The, if we've only budgeted 340, but we're gonna have to spend 400 and something, then we're gonna have to go deeper into fund balance initially, in order to do that work, are we not?
We would.
So why wouldn't you budget the full amount expecting a return?
Well, in part because I'm hopeful and optimistic, and at the time I was developing this, we, we had a developer hot, ready to move on it.
Okay, well, that, I mean, that bothers me a little bit, that it's not $2. I mean, it concerns me. I don't know if it bothers any of our board members or not, but.
Well, the other thing is that if, when it comes time to move, we would bring back to you options on re-scoping. I think, I think the bottom line that has to happen is that, is the Jones Street Connector. If we make this project affordable by keeping out the intersection improvements at Dogwood and Rendell, I think that's okay. So there's a way to make this project work with re-scoping.
Yeah, I get that, but you understand where my concerns come from.
I do.
That we're not budgeting enough money that we're gonna have, as much as we're gonna have to spend initially to make it work. That, that's my concern.
Well, can the, this transportation reserve be used for that purpose? It says save for FY '23 paving, but it's from the unspent tag fee. Does it have to go towards paving, or could we use that if we needed those extra funds to move ahead with that project?
Yeah, you could borrow against that. The reason that we're finally starting to get our head above water on street paving, and the reason we're able to do that is because we've got the dedicated gas tax, as well as the dedicated vehicle fees.
Mm-hmm.
And so you can make that change that you talked about. Just know that you might be losing ground on the street paving front. As long as you, you understand what the trade-off is, you can definitely do it. It's, there's not a limitation on what you can use the funds for, as long as it's a road type of project.
Well, let me just ask for a bit of clarification, then, because then, if you look under what is proposed for the, you know, our annual street resurfacing up at the top of that page, it's going to ask for another $288,000. Does that, is part of that $288,000 coming from that $145,000 that you're asking to be put in the reserve right now?
So the, go over a column, look under FY 2023, proposed.
Where it says tag fee and pile bill, go over that way?
Yep, so one, one, the 160 and the 128, that's that 288 that would fund that. So the 145 that's getting locked in now, that's not necessarily something that you would have to use for street paving.
So we don't have to use it for street paving? So it could be used for the Jones Street Connector, and we're still not going to be getting ourselves into a pickle, because we've already accounted for the funds that we're anticipating using for paving for, beginning in '23?
That is true.
Does that make sense, Mayor, to do it that way? Do we have to word it differently?
Yeah, you, yeah, you just have to restructure it a little bit, but it's, my concern is, just very simply, is that we got a number in there that's not enough. So even if we're gonna get reimbursement at some point, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to upfront it, and the only way we can do it is go deeper into fund balance. Unless you, unless you do this different scenario.
So the verbiage would have to be to dedicate the 145,000 transportation reserve funds?
I would.
Is, is.
I don't think you need to get into verbiage. What's gonna happen is, this 145 is gonna automatically roll into reserves. If we have to move forward on this Jones Street Connector earlier before a developer is ready, that's what we'll do. We'll come back to you with a, a re-scoped project, and see if it fits within the 340. If it doesn't, or if you want to do the full scope, we can make the recommendation to pull that 145 out of your reserves.
Okay. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I feel, I feel good about that, then.
Okay, as long as we're clear. All right. I, this, I have some heartburn over this West Sycamore Rendell to church, and I'm not necessarily here to kill it, but I would like for us to have a lot more conversation on it before we proceed.
I agree.
I agree, too.
It's two-thirds of a block, and I, I really need to, I would rather have staff come back with a better breakdown when we're ready to move on it, because I don't feel comfortable allocating those funds.
Well, I saw three heads nod. Yes, I don't know how the other two feel, but.
Does it also include the sidewalks?
Yeah, that's all part of that.
Yeah, that's, that's what, that's what that is, the sidewalk.
And the intersection.
Because wasn't it some discussion about seeing if the church would?
Well, that was for the right of way, but, but apparently, they, that falls within the, you know.
We just need to have a lot more conversation.
I agree.
That's all I'm asking for, is to earmark it and put it on, on a hold, don't move forward until we have further discussion, but you can leave it in the budget, or take it out and come back and dedicate later. Either one accomplishes the same goal, as far as I'm concerned. But that's all I'm trying to say.
So what would we prefer to do, guys? Take it out now and come back and add it in later?
Do you still want to use the money, though? If you don't do that part of sidewalk, would you use, pick another area?
Well, we would, once we discuss it.
Right.
I mean.
I mean, we need our sidewalks, so, I mean, if you don't want to do that one, yeah, yeah, I understand.
I'm not trying to kill the project. What I'm trying to do is have us to have a, a much better discussion of it. Now, it may come down, there's considerable amount of sidewalk that's already down that way, that I just would like for us to have a robust, if you will, conversation about it, before proceeding with any engineering or contract.
All right, we could keep it on the, keep it in the budget, and just put a hold on the project for the discussion.
Correct.
Okay, that's fine. So the hold on the West Sycamore Rendell to church project.
Yeah, 315,000.
Yep.
Right. Okay, any other discussions on any of that?
Shall we still, I'm assuming that, that ADA transition plan, that was for all of the crosswalks, or was that singly for the crosswalks involved with Sycamore?
This, this is an assessment on whether we meet the conditions of the, of the American Disabilities Act. This will be a factor in pursuing grant funds. This also could be, and I'm less certain about this, this could possibly have some punitive effects with it as well. The point being is, this is an assessment overall of our compliance or non-compliance, and how do we get compliant with the American Disabilities Act?
No, I, I understand that, and I'm fully supportive of it. I just want to understand the scope. Is it, is this, is the transition plan just for the West Sycamore Rendell to church project? It's for all of our, okay, thanks, Sheila.
Yeah, citywide.
Okay, good.
Okay. Everybody satisfied on that?
Yeah, on that one, yep.
The only other one that I really wanted us to talk further on is, hold on. Anyway, with alleyway activation. Again, I don't want to kill it, I want to have a better understanding. I know, speaking with one of you, you were not even aware where it was gonna be, which alley we were talking about. So I just, before we proceed on that, I'd like to have further conversation.
It's on page E8?
Yes, sir.
Alley activation, phase two, muter alley?
Right. Just put it on hold until we have further discussion and understanding.
I feel comfortable with that, but I'm also very open to having more discussion about it, because I think more discussion and more clarification is always a good thing.
Well, that's all I'm asking for, further discussion before any movement occurs on it.
So just put a hold on the alleyway activation? Okay.
Yeah, same thing as we did on the other.
Yep. I, I have two things, once you're done, Bob.
Okay, let me look real quick. I think I'm, I think that's it for me. I probably made enough people mad, so. Sorry about that, but. Well, that's it, that's all I have.
Okay, so if we go to E6, the Public Works Shed, I have some concerns about the overall cost. I've spoken with some building engineers from Olympia Steel, and talking to them about all of the things that were listed in the requested CIP for the shed. Their number for a building twice the size that is being requested from Public Works came in at about $150,000, but with the exception that I, I only had conversation about one 14-foot rolling bay door, and not the three that were proposed. And also in conversation, they said that steel prices are significantly higher this year, twice as high than they were last year. A lot of that in his 20-whatever years of experience, he believes is due to the increase that we've seen overall from the pandemic, in the additional cost of lumber as well. And he anticipated that those prices would stabilize, if not even go down. And so I, I'm just concerned about the $350,000. I would like to make sure that we have a shed, but I also think that, that that needs to be evaluated further, discussed further. So I would also like to put a hold on that, if no one is opposed.
So all of those are not killed?
They're not killed, because I think that we should get a shed.
I'm saying this for clarification before the motion. They're actually just simply put on hold for further clarification and discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody okay with that?
No, I, I like the shed, I think we need it.
Okay. Well, that's not saying it's not gonna be built, but, but I understand what you're saying. I appreciate your input. Okay.
Mayor, let me share with the board, just, and, and the timing would be for a while before the shed would get built, but I want, I want staff to hear this as well. I'm going to withhold pursuing a payloader and a leaf truck until I know that there's a place to keep them out of the elements. So I need to evaluate. Not moving forward on the Public Works Shed, it may have an impact on the fleet side as well, but we'll, we'll have that information. I just wanted to share that. So you all just had full information?
So basically, what you're saying is putting it on hold is not gonna hurt anything?
No, putting it on hold, I just want you to know, it's, it's also going to affect other things.
I understand that, but you said you wanted to evaluate those, if I understood you correctly.
Instinctively, I think, by not having a shed, we're not gonna have a place to park the payloader or the leaf truck.
I get that part. I had understood that there was a timing situation before proceeding with those, and that this was not the only consideration. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. I'm just telling you the way I understood it.
I think from a timing standpoint, it's not gonna make a big difference. I just wanted the board to know that there's ramifications that go beyond just the shed. That's it.
Okay, that's, that's all I was trying to do, Joe. All right, the only other thing, then, unless anybody has, did you, Shannon, you said you might have some other stuff? Did you get everything you have?
Um, I, I have one more.
Okay.
On E8, I am not in support of a building outfit grant. I think that those grants need to be, I would prefer to see those as low-interest loans. I'm not sure how that would be managed, but I know that that's how other municipalities handle that. And I realize that we have buildings that are in significant disrepair in the community, and the insides do need a lot of, a lot of work to bring them up to code, but I just don't know how comfortable I feel offering internal outfit grants, when we could be spending our money in ways that will benefit the overall aesthetic of the downtown area, i.e. through the outside facade grants.
Okay. May I make a comment, just for the board to consider?
Yes, agree.
So there's a couple of ways to do this. It can be a grant, I think more likely, a loan, or a, through tax increment financing. There's lots of ways that this could be packaged, and we can bring you back the policy options, whether it's a grant, whether it's a loan, whether it's a tax increment finance. What I don't want to do is create those policies if you're not interested in having some sort of financing structure to repair the inside of these buildings. And I will share with you, your facade grant is really limited on what it can do.
I'm so sorry.
Your, your facade grant is really limited on what it can do. If you're wanting to get these buildings rehabilitated, you're gonna need something like a building outfit, whether it's a grant, or a loan, or a tax increment financing. Those are questions you can solve later, when we bring you back some policy. But if you all don't do this, I'm not gonna have staff develop any plans on it. So just know that if you budget the money, it doesn't mean you're gonna do a grant. It just means that I'm gonna tell staff, okay, develop some options for the board to consider.
Well, I would like options for us to, to be considered, but it's worded as a building outfit grant, and so I just need to know that staff is gonna work to give us other options, because I, I really think that there are better ways for us to go about, you know, like utilizing the DAC program and revitalizing Main Street.
If you budget this, we will bring you back options.
I had understood, and Joe, you and I have had this conversation, and I know you're probably tired of hearing it, but I had understood that there, you had to manage that money in a certain way, without, it had to go through some other organization. Is that not the case anymore?
There's a lot of details involved.
Yeah, I know the, the course that I took at Chapel Hill was very explicit, and I know you don't necessarily agree with everything, I can't even remember the guy's name right now, but it concerned me, because it was money being spent inside the building. And I know I've heard y'all say that, that other communities are doing it. I just want to understand the logistics of that, and how logistics of that and how the law changed, so, you know, just.
Yep. We're not going to put you in harm's way, but I don't want to spend the time developing because this is going to be a complex process.
I understand.
If you're interested in budgeting it, then we will bring you back and we'll clarify what the law says and what it doesn't say. But if you're not interested in it in principle, then we've got other stuff that we can work on. That's all. But we're not going to put you in harm's way. We're going to clarify what your options are, and we're going to answer the questions and the concerns that you've got regarding the legality of it.
Well, the question to the board is then, do you want to add this new grant possibility?
I think we're all in agreement. We want an incentive downtown to get those buildings rented out, and no money is going to be spent until a policy's written, so this is going to come back before us, and I trust you're not going to get us in harm's way at all. So, I would suggest we leave it there and wait and take a look at the policy.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Other thing else, anybody have? We do have one more thing, by the way, and that's the fee schedule. If anybody has any, any questions or concern in the fee schedule.
I did have one question about, well, I had two questions about the fee schedules. First, Sheila, I didn't notice that the tent rentals for the farmer's market were included in the fee schedule, and maybe they needed to be. And I just don't understand, Chris, I love how your head popped up because you knew I was going to be talking to you. There are things like $5 for chainsaw, and I just don't, like, how is that, how are those fees parceled out? Is that, if?
Yeah. You see a lot of equipment that Public Works owns on that list.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And what that is, is it gives us, in case we get in a situation where we have to do a nuisance abatement, we have to assist the fire department or police department with a resource to abate a condition that they, we have adopted rates that if I use a light tower, if I use tobacco, I know what rate to charge out to those guys.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much.
Anything else in fees? Okay, I think that pretty well covers the line items of the budget with the exception of the nonprofits. I was looking for the list of the applicants. Did we have that?
This is within the...
I got it.
We were going to see if you actually put money in, and then Bobby was going to have a presentation after. We were going to wait till you adopted the budget to see what kind of money you put in there, and then Bobby's got a presentation on that.
Okay. Help me out so I don't have to dig through it. How much is proposed in it?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, the same five thousand that we always do.
Yeah, and that's, I hope it stays there, to be honest with you. We got really carried away years ago. Okay, well, and that's the case then. With the modifications that we made to earmark and hold actions, you have those listed, I assume.
Should I read them back? Do they need to be read back?
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
If I can, I'll make a motion, and we can discuss it based upon what we've already done here, and that would be that we adopt ordinance 2021-74 with the exception that the alley activation phase two for $100,000 be put on hold, even though it's budgeted. The West Sycamore Rendell project for $315,000 also be budgeted but put on hold, and the Public Works Building for $350,000 be budgeted and also be put on hold.
And then the?
Yeah, 28.
The $28,000.
Oh, and the $28,000 for the ATB from EMS be removed from the budget.
And the study on the fire station funds.
I think we can leave that there because they're going to have to come back to us.
That's the way I understood it. It was just, that'll leave my concern. My concern is I didn't want to go out there until this board at some point makes that final decision or make, you know, the labor of the point.
And the options on the upfit for the grants?
They're going to move forward and then come back to us with a?
Yeah, that's a citywide project and probably needs to be left in there as is because there are penalties if you're not ADA compliant.
Oh, I think he was talking about the inside upfit, not the ADA, right?
Not the facade, the interior.
He was talking about the interior upfit.
Oh, yeah, we'd leave the facade in there because a policy's going to come back to us to be reviewed, so that's, none of that $30,000 would be spent.
So, I would...
So, if I can clean that budget up.
So, can I second that with what he just said in the tiny bit of discussion that just happened, or do we need to re? I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, and the motion carries. Joe can issue a sign of relief.
Hot dog.
Okay. All right, folks, thank you. That's a really good conversation, in my opinion, and I appreciate it. Nonprofit funding distribution.
All right. Just a reminder, before we get into the details of the applicants, the town policy is for no more than $1,000 to any single organization and no more than $5,000 total, which just basically appropriated the $5,000 to be divided up. Just a review of the procedure and how it went down. In the budget, you saw $5,000. It was kind of put in there as a plug number. The notice of application period was, that it was open, was posted on the website and to our social media outlets on January 11th, stating that the application was available on the website and that it was due back to us by February 8th. We received 10 total applications, including one that was late but approved for consideration. They totaled $9,000. There were presentations made by most of them at the March 1st meeting, some of them written, some, I think, one video, and some people in person. A two-step policy analysis to consider. First, look at the service delivery. Does a nonprofit assist the town in delivering a typical municipal government public service, such as law enforcement, fire protection, et cetera? A community goal. Does this nonprofit deliver a public service typical of county government responsibilities, such as public health and social services? As far as fiscal analysis and efficiency, is this reallocation of town dollars and fees nonprofit a means to meet the municipal government responsibilities more efficiently? And effectiveness, is a reallocation of town dollars a means to address the local need identified by adopted policy that surpasses or is exceptional to a county-wide goal? You'll see on pages C2 through C36 in your budget document, those are all the applications in detail. They weren't included, again, in this PowerPoint or the attachment with it, but you'll see all the applicants and their requested amounts there before you. So, basically, at this point, it's up to you guys how you want to divvy it up. I'll open the floor for that.
Thank you, Bobby.
Okay, hold on a second. Now, we got $9,000 and...
$5,000 spent.
Right. What I was going to suggest was I would run down the list and see how many of the ones on there would get enough votes to stay on there. Does that make sense to y'all? And then we go back and look at fund allocation.
We can do it that way. That's fine.
Which, of course.
Which one came in late? Go the extra mile, I think, was it?
Progressive Teamwork Outreach.
That was late.
Yeah. I think that we can take that one off. I really think that's sticking to...
Well, let's wait. Glenn had a question.
Share His Glory. Had they been submitting an application?
I think this is second year.
Is this the Reverend Gray?
No, this is Roger Brantley.
Which one was the Reverend Gray?
I think that was Progressive Outreach, Progressive Teamwork Outreach.
Okay.
Okay, how many would like to keep due for him on there?
I'd keep two.
I would.
Okay, that's all I want is to show hands. How many would, okay. East Wake Education Foundation.
Absolutely.
Interact.
Yep.
We're probably going to keep them all. Ms. Zebulon. Okay, got four votes. Preservation Zebulon. Annie, I get two votes. I don't understand what Annie was saying. Okay.
I didn't vote on that.
All right, Share His Glory.
Share His Glory.
No. Shepherd Care Medical Clinic. Zebulon United Methodist Church Food Pantry.
Well, I don't know if that's another one.
Wait a minute, I need to understand. Who voted for that? One more time because we got two votes and no. Go the extra mile. I'm not even sure what they are. Could you help me again on that?
Go the mile, sister. I said, go the mile, sister.
I think that was new, wasn't it? I think it came from Spock.
On page C14? C14 is where their application is?
I know, just tell me. I wouldn't lie.
Their mission statement says to improve and reach families in the Zebulon area in need of food and clothing resources.
Okay.
They intend to use the grant to provide the proper equipment needed to help the mission run more efficiently.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go the extra mile. Who wants to do that? Nope. Progressive Teamwork Outreach. Nope. Okay, so what we have is four that the majority wanted.
I need to...
Due for Him, East Wake Education, Interact, and Ms. Zebulon. So...
And Shepherd's Care.
No, Shepherd's Care didn't get, yeah, it did.
Yeah, it did.
I'm sorry. I put a check mark and not an X. Thank you, Glenn. Okay, so we got five.
What was the other one, then?
Shepherd's Care.
Oh, the Ms. Zebulon.
Yeah, I'll read them again, just to be sure. Due for Him, East Wake Education, Interact, Ms. Zebulon, and Shepherd's Care. So, that's five. So, the question is... All of, well, Ms. Zebulon only got $500 last year, but if you want to spend all the $5,000, you can give them each a thousand.
Mayor, I would really like to make a plea for Zebulon United Methodist Church Food Pantry. Throughout the pandemic this year, they've done an amazing, amazing job. So...
Well, what do y'all want to do? I think you were the only one that voted for them, Shannon.
Uh-oh. I don't have trouble.
Did you? Okay.
I did. Yeah, I voted for it, too.
So, if we could, some of the others, like, you know, but we didn't get the, y'all didn't get the votes, so, I mean, but, yeah, we could, I've got, like, Due for Him, I put $500, and I put $1,000 for East Wake and $1,000 for Interact, and...
I agree with that. Maybe we, maybe this method, maybe we should just do it like we did it last year because there were, there were more people. I mean, I think that narrowing it down was good, but...
Everybody here could, I have it so everybody gets something.
A lot of these, in my opinion, are duplicate services. I say a lot of them, but some of them are duplicate services.
I agree.
And, I don't know, I have a problem picking one service over another when they're both doing the same thing, but nonetheless, we don't have to give them $1,000, we don't have to give them $500, we give them $100 or we do whatever, you know, makes y'all happy.
Well, I mean, I know that, that I think Bev was interested in Go the Extra Mile, and I think someone else was, maybe you, Larry?
Do what?
Annie was.
Or maybe Annie. I mean, I would be fine with that, you know, if we could split the Go the Extra Mile with Zebulon United Methodist. They seem to both be doing food-related ministry work, but perhaps in different, in different capacities, so we could split that money.
So does Progressive Teamwork Outreach. They basically, they basically do the same thing.
I just, and they were a late submission, so I kind of feel like, but if you're passionate about it, Glenn, then we can, that's what we're, this is all about. Let's work it out.
All right, right now, we have it down to five. So, what you're saying, you want to go back and now modify. Is that right? I want to be sure what we're doing here. Is that what everybody wants to do?
I was going to say, if you want to accept the nine that were on time, times five is $4,500, and then somebody gets an additional $500, if you're going to spread it out among all the applicants.
That's another way to do it.
Well, I've spread it out, not one.
I agree with that. Okay, so I think that actually we can spread it out between Due for Him, East Wake, Interact, Ms. Zebulon, Share His Glory, Shepherd's Care, Zebulon United Methodist Church, Go the Extra Mile, and then maybe that Progressive Teamworks. Glenn? And do that, split that up? How does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
And do it?
Okay, let's talk money on them.
All right.
So, the only one that you're knocking out is Preservation Zebulon. Okay, I know. I just want to be clear where we are because I thought we were going another way, and that's fine. It's your call.
I would think, you know, we've been, we've been supporting them, and now we don't want to support them.
Yeah, I think that's what we're saying. Love to have them. I think that they could be great for them to utilize our town hall if they have events because I know that's a cost to the town.
Okay, let's try it again, folks. Apparently, what I wanted didn't work, and that's fine. So, how much do you want to give to these people?
Thousand for Interact.
A thousand for Interact, that's what I've got.
I feel good about that.
A thousand to East Wake Education.
I also support that as well.
Go extra mile, a thousand.
Thousand for Shepherd Care.
Okay, I agree with that.
Say that again.
A thousand for Shepherd's Care.
All right, that leaves you $2,000.
$500 to Ms. Zebulon Organization.
Okay.
Leaves you $1,500.
$500 to Zebulon United Methodist Church.
Zebulon Food Pantry.
Okay. Did we do Due for Him? Do we want to do $500 for them?
Do we put $500 for Due for Him?
$500 for Due for Him?
That's what I put on mine. I don't know.
That's, that's fine, yes.
Is that what you want to do?
That'd be good, $500.
How much left?
$500.
Is it?
So, you can go $250 apiece on the last two.
$250 apiece on the last two.
Sounds good.
So, that's everybody got...
All right, let me run down them one more time. I want to be sure that we're all...
Yep, yep, yep. Let's make sure our math.
Okay, everybody got funded, but Preservation Zebulon, Due for Him got five, East Wake got, East Wake Foundation, $5,000, Interact, $1,000, Ms. Zebulon, $500, Share His Glory, yeah, I didn't mark that one.
Shepherd's Care got $1,000.
There's a thousand for Shepherd's Care.
Or do we give them a thousand? Do we give them a thousand?
Yeah, that's what Glenn... Yeah, that's what, um, Glenn's.
Let me, let me recalculate here.
I have a lot of new works on my paper.
2,500. 2,000. Four, 4,000.
About 2,000 left.
No, Share His Glory was not funded, so we need to know. We, we got to go back.
Well, he does help with the children.
Say that again.
I mean, that one helps with some of the children, doesn't it, here in town?
No, I know. What I'm saying is the way that you allocated money, we ran out of money. So Share His Glory has zero, so we need to go back and modify something.
Okay.
Well, Go the Extra Mile and Progressive have 100, 500 each?
250 each.
Okay, 250, that's 500 together.
250, um, for, um, Food Pantry, 250 for Share His Glory.
You okay with that? 250, 250.
I'm willing to compromise. I'd rather take it away from Ms. Zebulon, quite honestly, because I think that there's not as large of a reach into the community.
Okay, well, let's find out what the board wants to do. The, the choices are to take and split the 500 from either United Methodist and give half to Share His Glory or take half of it from Ms. Zebulon and give half. So how many want to take it from the Food Pantry?
I don't want to take it from either one of them.
What about, um, take half from Due For Him?
Yeah, you could do that.
Okay. All right, so do 250?
There'd be 250.
So that's what you want to do is take it from Due For Him?
Yeah, 250.
250 for that one and 250 for Due For Him.
250 for Share.
And then 250 for Share.
All right, I'm going to run down them one more time.
Okay, but I think we got it.
Due For Him, 250. Somebody do the math, be sure we, you know, thank you, Bob. Due For Him's 250, East Wake Education, 1,000, Interact, 1,000, Ms. Zebulon, 500, Share His Glory, 250, Shepherd's Care, 1,000, Zebulon United Food Pantry, 500, Go the Extra Mile, 250, Progressive Teamwork, 2, uh, 250.
5,000.
All right.
That's it, okay.
Everybody happy with that?
Yes.
That's good.
So would somebody care to venture with the motion?
I make the motion?
Stop.
Glenn made, Glenn made the motion. Is there a second?
Annie, second.
I second.
Wait, wait, can Annie make the motion since it's her birthday?
I thought somebody made it.
Glenn made the motion. All right, good. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Done and done. I appreciate it, folks. Joe, manager of support.
Two things. I know that you all know this, so I'm telling you as a way to tell the community. The, um, Zebulon Historic District application went before the National Register Advisory Committee. They unanimously recommended that it be moved forward for consideration to the National Park Service. So that's the next step. It will go before the National Park Service to be considered. The second thing is, uh, thank you for your time on the budget. I meant what I said. We're here to put you in a place to win and to be informed. So, um, any comments you've got on the budget before we start assembling the next budget, please, uh, share them with me. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Stop.